Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Here.
Merringa.
Here.
Nordhook.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truust.
Here.
Vanderwall.
And Mirmas.
Here.
Well, tonight, we do not have a local clergy person, so I've asked Councilmember Nordhook to give the invocation. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation. We're going to follow that with a pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight as we embark on the season of summer. And we ask that during this season, you would make it a time for safe travel, a time for rest and leisure, and a time for forging strong bonds with our family, our friends, and our neighbors, for all those who live in our community. We also ask a special blessing on all those who serve in our community, from the people who repair our roads, to those who clean our water, to those who sacrifice themselves to keep us safe. We would ask that you would guide this council tonight, give us humility to understand and have clarity, give us eyes that look toward your will and the common good for all, and give us hearts full of civility and respect. Finally, we ask a special blessing on our assistant, city manager Matt. We ask that you would bring healing to his body, you would guide those who care for him, and you would give hope and peace to those who love him. We pray this and all things in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Justin. I appreciate that very much. Well, before I forget, we'll notice that JR Vanderwall is not here tonight. He's out of town, and he is asked to be excused from tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to excuse JR?
So moved.
Support.
Support and discussion. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Great, thank you. JR, thank you as well. You have before you tonight a copy of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. We also have the minutes from our last meeting, May 22. You've had a chance to take a look at those. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Support. Motion, support. Any additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to comment? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes from May 22, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Tonight, we have another substantial amount of bills to approve, almost just shy of a million dollars. So before we open it up for questions, any comments you'd like to make, Dennis or Jane?
No, sir.
Okay. Any questions about any of the bills? Again, a lot of things going on in the city, so bill amount is up there. Is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $983,318.70?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truust.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mirmas.
Yes. Well, tonight, we have a presentation. This is a police department civilian accommodation. Ah, yes.
JR, could you join us up here, please? I'd like to thank the mayor and council for allowing us to change our awards protocol a little bit. In the past, we had to wait a whole year to be able to honor people. Our guys are kind of used to the delay in government service, but we thought it didn't necessarily reflect well when we had somebody from outside of our agency that was worthy of some recognition. We're here today to present Eric Hutchinson, who is the assistant communications.
I have it, yeah. I read it.
Even though it's a civilian, as you can tell from his uniform, he is a proud member of the Kent County Sheriff's Office. He is also a Granville resident, who has provided us exceptional service through the communications center, and more so for his outstanding situational awareness. He's come in and fixed problems for us even before we had a chance to record them through proper channels. So it gives me great honor to recognize you for your efforts on May 10th this year. Eric was on his way home in his department-issue vehicle that is also equipped with supplemental emergency equipment such as an AED and Narcan when there occurred to our officers being dispatched to the Grand Castle on a medical emergency. With his great understanding of dispatch, he was also very situationally aware and realized that our fire department were out on multiple structured fire calls, and therefore our medical first responders, who in our city are the fire department, would be greatly delayed. Mr. Hutchinson arrived unseen long before Wyoming Fire, who was sent to assist due to our fire department being tied up. When he arrived, and when our officers arrived, the person was in agne breathing. Thanks to Mr. Hutchinson having his Narcan with it, he directed the administration of two doses of Narcan, and the subject was able to be responsive when ALS and Wyoming Fire arrived shortly thereafter. So we'd like to present you with this civilian accommodation. Good effort tonight. I'm very uncomfortable with this. Thank you, Brian, for forcing, I mean, yeah.
Thank you so much. That's an amazing story. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad you live around here.
Yeah, well done. Well done.
It's time for public comment. Is there anybody here tonight would like to address the council? If so, just come on up to the podium, give us your name, your address, and tell us what you're thinking about tonight.
You seem up for other issues. Kim Christman, 4439 42nd Court, lived in Granville since 1988. I'm here on a public safety issue. You know I'm a cyclist. I work at West Michigan Bike and Fitness. I sell electric bikes, reading the ordinance, which I did. We don't enforce the bicycle ordinance in Granville. There's no tagging, there's no nothing. There's, we enforce maybe the motorcycle. I am requesting because, as a cyclist and a walker in Granville, seeing an electric bike that can do 25 to 28 miles an hour, class three, going down our sidewalks scares the living boating me. Michigan is a class one on the trails, 20 miles an hour maximum, pedal assist, no throttle. We actually are selling a throttle bike now that my management, for some odd reason, thought it would be good. It's 20 miles an hour cap, 25 miles an hour pedal assist. It's considered class three. I find that electric bikes, they're great for some people, older folks, some folks that might have some limited capacity, which scares me because I know a kid that has one and has crashed multiple times. I just think the city ought to take a look at other cities and seeing what they're doing with e-bikes. Mackinac Island's going to try to ban them. So I'm not saying ban them, but put them on the road, take them off the sidewalks. And it comes down to enforcement with the chief. I mean, if you see a bike, nobody's pedaling, just cruising down the sidewalk, our officer should pull them over. Don't even question, just find them. That's the only way people learn. So I'm just requesting that the city consider looking at the ordinances, viewing other cities, and coming up with a way to mitigate the potential risk of our citizens. That's why, if you have a question or a complaint, let me know.
Okay. Appreciate the comments. I see our city manager's taking notes, so.
Any questions, let me know.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else here tonight like to come and address the council? Just come on up to the podium, give us your name, address, tell us what you're thinking about.
Sure. Nathan Van Wieren. I live at 3845 Grand Street, right here in Granville. Actually, not very far from here. Could have walked, but, um, American, right?
Yeah, right.
But I was here to, I was told that I had to escalate this to this committee because our water bill got messed up in error. Now, I did, I did spend a little bit of time going through this. I'm an applications engineer, formerly a cost engineer, and before that, a manufacturing engineer. So I do have some experience with some of the systems that we're talking about in the water meter. And I was surprised by a sudden 472% increase in my water bill in quarter four of, quarter three and quarter four of last year. I was told that what we needed to do was go ahead and have that looked at. We had two plumbers out to our house separately from the Deppi-Stelma Plumbing Company, right here in Granville. They indicated that they thought it was the water meter itself that was off, and we can certainly get that statement from them if we need to. After that, we asked the city to go ahead and test, do whatever they needed to, to the water meter. Now, I contacted Jane Sauerman today, and I talked to her. She was very helpful in figuring out what had happened and where. And she said, basically, we needed to have that tested at the time it was replaced. Now, I didn't think we knew about that, but after I talked to my wife, evidently, we'd also asked and offered to pay for the testing on our meter as well, to make sure it was defective and we could get that money back, that we were obviously billed in error. Because the second we had that fixed, the city said this couldn't happen. The usage went right back to where it's been for the past five years that we've lived at that property. So that 472% increase went right away. I'd be happy to provide any of the documentation on that. Unfortunately, we did ask for that, but the city has since lost that meter. They scrapped out parts of it, installed it in other areas. We don't believe we can find it. I would ask that the city go ahead and average our past usage and subtract that from the $1,000 we were billed for those two quarters. That'd be about a $700 difference, but I don't have access to everything going back all five years, though I'm sure the city does. But that was what I came here to talk about. If any other information can be given from my end, I'd be happy to provide anything. I'd be happy to clarify anything. But yes, that was basically a huge increase in, as I say, it's possible that my daughter was waking up every single night, she's three, turning on the water and turning it back off before I'd go get up in the morning. But that seems extremely, extremely unlikely. It seems extremely, extremely stretched to say anything like that was happening. I'm surprised that the city didn't track that or didn't do anything with that and didn't do any testing on the meter after it was replaced and changed out, especially since the results were exactly what we said they would be and what our plumber said they would be. I was just kind of surprised about the whole thing, but I was told that I needed to come here, but the council has a reputation for being fair, so I thought I would bring that to everybody here and hopefully get that taken care of. Is there anything else I can do or clarify? I have my business cards, I guess, if you want. I'm an engineer over at Proust, which is a local metal manufacturing company, but I've worked with just about everything over the course of my career.
Great. Appreciate the comments. We'll talk to treasurer's office and DPW.
Okay.
And they've got your contact information, I believe.
Absolutely. Who is the person?
Highness Director Jane Sauerman.
Oh, Jane Sauerman.
Just here this evening, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else here like to address the council?
His name?
If so?
I neither.
Just come on up to the podium, give us your name and address. Okay. Last call for comments? Okay. Next item is consent agenda, and it's an extensive consent agenda, but there's lots of memos in there. We have a couple of May reports, the treasurer and the police report, also the minutes from the park and rec board, April 26 meeting, the library May meeting, the planning commission meeting from June 7. Also, appointments to the planning commission, those would be, I believe, reappointments for people who are already serving on there. And those would be for a term expiring two years from now, July 1 of 2026. We also have a number of purchase orders, so this approval of the consent agenda would, of course, be in the best interest of the city. There's HVAC replacement in the fire department. One thing is, was immediately replaced because air conditioning went out in the living quarters, and that needed to be fixed right away. So that will be kind of a confirmation or affirming what's already been purchased. But additional HVAC replacements, I think, four other units. Also, citywide computer refresh, citywide computer monitor refresh, and then some IT services moving to the government has its own cloud service, which seems like a good thing and probably really a wise thing to do. And then also a NetMotion mobility VPN software. So before we take a motion to approve, is there any question that anybody has on the council? There's memos here, but we're all here tonight, so.
Yeah, I would address this to Josh regarding the minutes of the parks and rec board. It seems like for the last year or so, under old business, Memorial benches always says there's no update at this time. Is there any way that we can get this completed?
It's kind of an ongoing thing where people will purchase or sponsor a bench.
So we're not waiting on any benches that?
There have been times where we've been waiting on product to come in to be able to place them for people that have kind of advanced ordered, but it's kind of an ongoing thing where if people are interested in sponsoring a bench, they can purchase one and then have it placed, working with DPW out in the parks.
So we're not waiting on a particular donation that has designated a bench, and we don't have the bench yet? It's just a standard item in the minutes that say no update?
Right, yeah. It's just kind of been an ongoing program. You know, some months, we've had people that have purchased one where we've been working with DPW to find a spot in a park for them to place it based on kind of their preference. Other months, there's just not activity.
Thanks. That clarifies that for me.
And I think we, for a while, we did have a backlog on product, but I think they have a couple, if I'm not mistaken. Charlie, you have a couple in store? So we've got a couple that are available now if somebody's interested going forward.
I just didn't want anybody who's waiting not have one come.
Yeah. No, we did have that for a while when there were some supply chain issues, but now we've got a couple in reserve. We usually try to order a couple extra, so we have them on hand. Yes, there are people that want them, so they don't have to wait.
Beautiful. Thank you.
So our comment to Police Chief Anklum, you noted in your memo on the May report of police activities that Cadet higher of Morgan Hookman?
Yes.
Anyway, met her at the farmer's market on Tuesday morning. Delightful person, looks like a really good hire.
And she's going to work out very well for us this summer?
Any other questions about any of the items on the consent agenda?
Why is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
For Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah.
For the planning commission, do we need to state the people that we are?
Sure. It's Jason Flanagan and Chris Scholter. So, thank you. Thanks. So did we have?
A motion.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Great. Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truust.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
And Mirmas.
Yes. Dennis, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on the manager's report this evening is a bid of war for a fire station project. Chief May is here this evening to give you a brief introduction of this project and a little bit of the history. The city's consultant from Naderbell is also joining us via Zoom in case you have some questions that the chief can't answer. So Chief May?
I guess to break it down as far as I possibly can, I'm here tonight to ask you to approve the recommendation from our forensic engineer from Naderbell, and you were provided a fair amount of information in your packet, so I guess we can start with any questions you might have. There's just a lot of ground we could cover, and I'd assume go in the direction you want me to go.
Chief, I've got a question, and I should know the answer to this.
And our engineer is here too, so I can phone a friend if I have to.
When was this building constructed? I know it was a super busy time.
Late 90s. It was completed and opened in 2000.
Okay. So it's 23, 24 years now. Okay, just curious. Time goes fast.
It does.
But I know all their balances, so.
Since day one.
Yeah.
I have two questions. The first one is, only two people bid on the project, is that right? Orion and DCI?
Can you unmute my guy here? But I believe that is correct.
Yeah, that is correct. There were two contractors who committed the R2.
Okay, great. I saw the reasons for the recommendation. I just wondered if there were any others, but that's good. And then my second question is, there's some outstanding work projects on here that are additionally listed that aren't currently part of the project, and I just wondered if we felt there was any cost savings that could occur if we went with some of those now while we're bringing someone in to do this work, or if those things are just kind of, you know, extras that really we can hold on?
We didn't include as much of that supplementary work into DCI's proposal as they were willing to take on, correct, Luke?
Yeah, that's correct. They did include the windows, the insulation, the steel reinforcement of the front, I guess, the north elevation machinery. So they did a number of add-on that they were happy to take on.
And the other maintenance issues were things identified by Charlie and his staff, and I think Charlie can probably speak to the timing on those, but our desire is to get as much of this as we can done in one fell swoop to limit the disruption and allow you to move on with some other projects. I know you have penalties.
Okay.
Any other questions for the chief or the engineer? If not, is there a motion to award this bid to Dyke House Construction Incorporated in the amount of $1,136,544.04 in the best interest of the city?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any comments or questions?
Thanks very much, Luke.
Just real quick. Yeah. I assume there will have a contract that comes eventually, right? When we get the work started?
Yeah.
Will that include some kind of warranty of work and things like that?
You still there, Luke?
Good point. Yeah.
That was a question, yeah.
Yeah, and we do also have, in our original proposal, we do still have plenty of buckets for onsite oversight during the construction as well. So we intend to have broken servers out there to make sure that what's getting put on is not what was previously put on.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question.
I don't want to do this over again.
Right.
No.
Any other comments or questions? Good, I bet, from your perspective, it can't happen soon enough.
Well, you know, it's been so long that it doesn't seem like it's been long anymore. But yeah, we're all grateful to finally get this resolved once and for all. It just, honestly, it's gone on so long, we don't even notice it anymore, so it'll be a relief to get some of these things finally buttoned up.
Okay, we've had a motion support. Any final questions? If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truust.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
And Mirmas.
Yes.
Thanks very much. Thanks again, Luke.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief. How's it going?
Dennis, next item, heritage park boardwalk replacement.
This is another project that's been ongoing. Charlie is here this evening. He can talk to the process that was undertaken to get to where we are tonight and the recommended bid of war.
They said in the last two years, if not more, and three, we've been working on this project. Hard to get companies to come in and do it. We finally found this company, Riverworks Construction, who also recently built the trail from the clean water plant to the cotton drive. Did an excellent job. He wasn't just doing. We debated on how to do this. We did some test driving out there. We came up with putting into the steel-driven piles, kind of the seawall. Currently, the boardwalk stands elevated along the distal nod, it'll be running along this edge. Then we'll put a five-foot sidewalk, concrete along that, and kind of the stairs coming up, there'll be stairway for a sidewalk coming out to the schoolhouse, down to the boardwalk. There will also be a new dock put out there. It won't be a floating dock, it'll be a permanent dock. It'll be on steel pilings, and it'll be all composite decking, so it'll be long maintenance. Fencing, there'll be a four-foot fence along it. It'll be chain-linked, rubberized, coated, and it'll be four foot high, and then every so often, we're going to dump it down to three feet, so that if someone's in a wheelchair and they want to do a fishing, they have that ability. You don't have to go an extra foot, they'll be down three foot, because if you sit in a wheelchair, you're floating that height. Worked extensively with Morbruchek on this. Contracts have come in at a decent price. I'd like to get moving on it and get it to start, you know, start yet this summer and hopefully finish by fall.
Any questions for Charlie? Anything he'd like to add?
No, I mean, he's right. It has been a couple of years in the works. I mean, I think things stalled out a little bit during COVID, but I think we talked about it even prior to, and we were a little concerned about a lot of increasing costs, and this is a little bit higher than what we thought originally, I think, but it was still pretty reasonable, given circumstances.
Three years ago, I put $115,000 in the budget.
Yeah.
And I remember at the time, Andy Stevens had said, that's too much money, it shouldn't cost that much. Well.
Yeah, no.
We're a little higher than that today.
Yeah, not that much, though, really, considering some of the other things, but.
It actually came in under budget, so.
Great, yeah, we're good. So no, it's good to get this done. It's been kind of a long time in making and should be a nice improvement to the park there, so looking forward to it.
Well, I know a lot of people enjoy that park, too.
We can do some weddings open?
I did a wedding. I'm a dog, and yeah, this would be a nice place, a good wedding venue, if anybody's looking for here. By the way, for $10. Any other questions, Dennis? Why is there a motion to award this project to Riverworks Construction Incorporated in the best interest of the city in the amount of $456,090?
So moved.
Motion? Support. And support. Final questions? Okay, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truust.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mirmas.
Yes. And now this project also, part two to what is to approve the total estimated budget, which of course includes the award that we are already just awarded. But that was prepared by Morin Bruchek, and the total estimated budget, including lots of bio, technical engineering, soil borings, test pile driving, those kind of things, and contingencies, the total estimated budget is $580,000. Is there a motion to approve that project? Estimated budget?
Support.
And support. Any other comments or questions? Not? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truust.
Yes.
And Mirmas.
Yes. Anything else about us?
Just a couple of items of note. The city's phone, new phone system will be cutting over tomorrow at noon hour. We are sending out information for citizens on the website and via social media to announce that we will be, you know, without phones for about an hour. Our preference was to originally do that before or after work hours, but AT&amp;T would not accommodate our needs, and so we picked the second best, which is the lunch hour. Also, I wanted to remind the council that there is a public, there is a police department promotional ceremony scheduled for the 21st. Those are our new corporals. That starts at 6:00 and will be in the 59th District Courtroom. Thank you.
Great. Okay, Randy's. We'll start with councilmember comments. You're in. Oh, yeah, no questions, no comments tonight. Thank you. All right, Josh?
Yeah, just say I appreciate the new pavement going down around town. You know, the streets are getting done this last couple of weeks, and it looks good. They've been efficient. They've been minimally disruptive to the neighborhood, so I think mine just got finished today in several of the streets in my neighborhood, and I know that prairies have done.
Prairie will be open Friday.
So that's great. It's great to see those projects happening and new pavement going. So that's great, but it's great to see those projects happening and new pavement going down. It's nice and smooth. That's it.
Justin? Nothing for me? Okay.
Nothing tonight.
Paul?